And get familiar with the overall town goals, long-term capital planning and so forth. And put my efforts towards, as time permits, towards those type of things. And as Dave said, a lot of it's seasonal and repetitive, but those are important things. That's what makes a town look good and keeps the residents happy. So I'm looking forward to it. I think this is something that my career has led me. Do you have any questions? That would be all free.
Do you want to start or end it?
I actually, we had a casual conversation in Linda's office. So I got to chat a little bit with them. What would you say was one of your successes in your working with Stone?
On in the private, well, in the private side, I've had some successful jobs that have won awards. But those usually team, they're not just me, but I've been part of those. And on the municipal side, taking broken things and fixing them. Like water sewer and both in Norfolk prior to Stone and in Stone. Supply was, you know, it's where the town needs to go is up to the town fathers and mothers. And in Stone, they wanted growth. You can't grow without the water sewer infrastructure being there and having the supply plentiful and compliant. So walked into a tough situation there and now it's running smooth. So I'd say I'm pretty proud of that. Because the rest of the town functions and goals depend on that.
Can you talk maybe just a little bit about some of your, some of the things you've been involved with as far as the engineering side of things and what you've?
Yeah, so civil engineering design covers what? Well, everything, you know.
Yep.
Not for me, not bridges, but bridges, roads, drainage, landfills.
Sidewalks?
Sidewalks, yes, paving, drainage. What else?
Any particular project that you've done that particularly proud of and that leans towards the engineering side versus?
Back in the time when all the landfills were being capped, I was working on a super fun site up in New Hampshire. And that won an ACEC award that was, this is different categories, but won the highest award. I was the resident engineer in the field on that. And there were a lot of problems and a lot of field changes and I'd like to take a little bit of credit for that one.
No, that'll do. I don't think my first question I've written down is relevant for tonight. I do want to quickly, before we move too far along, thank Linda, Chris and Art for their, for your participation in the search. Greatly appreciated and I want to say welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Well, first we need to make a motion to ratify his contract.
So you're not welcome aboard yet?
Not yet.
We'll try that again in a minute.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to ratify Philip McNulty as his employment as DPW director.
Again, it's subject to, he has to do a drug test in a physical.
Yep.
So it's just subject to, actually tomorrow as well.
I will second that motion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, welcome aboard. Thank you very much.
They'll just say, you know, you have our full support. We want you to succeed. I think you're going to find this is a really great town, great people. You have a great mentor there. Chris has done a wonderful job. He's been a complete pleasure to work with. We're going to miss him. You're going to miss him greatly.
It's good that we're overlapping.
Yes. So always know you have this board's full support.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, let's eat.
Have fun, Chris.
Surf's up, baby.
Second on the agenda is the Common Vic, never say that right, Vic license application for King Kebab located at 233 West Century Street. Bet your king kebab.
Which one of you's king?
All right, you want to let us know about this, David? What do we have here?
Yep, so this is going to go in the Hockamack Plaza where Subway used to be. So from my understanding, everything is in order. So again, if you want to speak to what, you know, the food you're going to have and what you're going to serve, please let the board know.
Absolutely. Thank you.
The basic concept of this restaurant is QSR, quick service restaurant, the heavy emphasis. And the delivery, DoorDash and Uber, that's the overall trend from sit-down dining to that proceeding. The second thing was that we wanted something different, something unique, which I'm in between brain frequency and all the way up to Providence. Probably you won't find the kind of food we serve and the variety of food we serve. So that was something that we gave to this south coast area, something unique, something different from the regular burger and, you know, chicken tenders. So that is one point. We are, this is our first restaurant in this location. We are basically not in the restaurant business on the south coast, although his family has a south pointing restaurants in Spain, which do the same thing. They go by the same name as our other business. We're basically in the smoke shop business in the Boston area. And we also have gathered a team. We are four people who will look after the various aspects. I do the paperwork. He is not a certified chef, but he is the guy who wants to do it hands-on. I mean, if you go there, he'll be testing recipes. Of course, we can't open, so we can't test it on public, but he'll be trying how tikas are made, how good a naan is, is it soft and all that. Secondly, we have a guy who has worked for three years making these things. Doner kebabs and tikas and naan and biryani's. So the experience and the exposure is already there to successfully run the restaurant. And we hope to provide something unique and we hope to make it a good restaurant between the south of Boston till all the way to Providence.
I can personally speak, I'm excited to have you there and this variety of food that is not represented in this area very well, if at all. So I have no issues. I wish you the best.
Oh, the menu looks delicious. We typically ask that you bring samples. But no, I wish you the very best. It sounds wonderful. It really sounds good. And then your prices look very reasonable as well.
Yeah, that's what the prices should have been. We think some of the restaurants are not being too fair. I mean, serving something unique doesn't mean the owner making three dollars on something which costs only fifty cents. So that's why these prices are there, which are not only competitive, but they're realistic. They're realistic.
Yeah.
Down the line, if inflation wants it, just go up a dollar or two dollar more, not. I know they are not twenty-five dollars a dish the way some restaurants serve and some they don't.
And that's a very busy intersection, so.
Yep, that's why we.
Have a lot of traffic there, so.
In the morning, one of course, stop and go on the breaks.
And the folks next door to you at the Grace Church, I don't know if you've met anyone over there yet, they're wonderful people.
They're nice.
Very, very nice. Yeah, very nice people. Well, I don't have any other questions. Do you, Jeff?
No, I think the question that was asked when you first arrived is to when do you open? Would be the only other question.
All our inspections are complete because of seeing the paperwork. It just says, subject to the approval of Vic license. Everybody.
Everything's complete?
Subject to the.
So you'll be open Saturday? Is that what you're thinking?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven?
Super.
All right.
All right, people are asking and wondering, so.
Sounds good.
We're excited.
So is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the license.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations and best of luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You can stay if you like, but if you've got something to go cook, feel free to go.
I'm sure he is introducing that.
Thank you.
Tomorrow we will.
Super. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we're a little after six forty-five, but this is a continuation of the public hearing regarding Southern Comfort Restaurant, 320 West Century Street. It was a violation of the town's alcohol policy and MGL chapter 138, section seventy-seven.
Correct. So at our last meeting, fourteen days ago, members of the organization was here. And because of an issue between them and the landlord, they had not been open. It was a continual violation of our policy. It was decided at that point that it was better for them to be able to voluntarily surrender the license, of which they did do. So they have dropped off the license and also a majority of their shareholders have also signed on to the letter as well. So with that said, what I would be looking for the board, requesting the board to do, is to vote to accept the surrender of the license to Three Guys Enterprise LLC, DVA Southern Comfort, effective this evening.
So my understanding is they did surrender the license, correct?
License is in.
You received it, okay. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we need to take a vote to close the public hearing that we previously opened.
Yep, I'd like to make the motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, I will second. All in favor? Roll call vote.
Ryan, yes.
Raise yes. Okay, next is vote to amend the town alcohol policy to exclude the pledge of inventory.
So this came as a result of last meeting. You'll recall that one of our other establishments was looking to use the alcohol inventory and license as collateral. And so therefore the board did approve it. It is fairly common, however, it does create repercussions in the future if that person does not pay. Because the board then is no longer in ownership of that, it is actually the bank. So with that said, there was a discussion from the chairperson. We thought that it was best that we just actually exclude this going forward. And so we've placed this back on the agenda. So if the board is inclined to exclude a pledge of inventory slash license as part of your policy moving forward, I would ask you to take that vote. I will then provide to town council, we'll work on the language. And once we place it in there with the appropriate legalistic language, I'll bring it back and help you sign it at your leisure.
I'm good with this. I thought, you know, we had our conversation after the last vote.
So I think it's wise on the town's part. Too much can happen with a business when you have this license pledged as collateral. And subsequently, the business runs into some sort of financial difficulty, especially if it's a bankruptcy, that can be long and drawn out. We lose the right to issue the license to another operating business, so I think it's a wise policy. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to amend the town alcohol policy to exclude the pledge of inventory.
Okay, I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to accept the meeting minutes of September sixth, twenty twenty-three?
I'll make that motion.
Second, all in favor? Vote to, aye, vote to approve the meeting minutes of July twelfth, twenty twenty-three and August second, twenty twenty-three?
I don't, they, without a clerk, can we not accept those at this time or sign us?
You can vote to accept it.
Okay.
But you should, at our next meeting, we'll probably place on there to have, you'll have to appoint someone that will have clerk responsibilities in order to sign documents.
Okay. So in that case, I vote to approve the meeting minutes of July second, August, I'm sorry, July twelfth and August second.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discuss Employee Appreciation Day, twenty twenty-three?
Yes, so I think we're, I think we, I think next Friday would work for me. I don't know, I know there's a conflict for you, David, but I don't, I don't know what, I'm open to other days. I thought your calendar was restrictive.
Yeah, in October it gets a little tight, but my concern is that we're not really giving everyone much notice if we do it next week. And what if we changed it from Friday to another day?
Okay.
Just because I'd like to give everyone a little more notice. It could be an alternate Wednesday when we don't have a meeting.
Sorry, never pull my phone up at this meeting other than for look at a calendar. It's fine. Is there a day better?
Wednesdays, I'm pretty open except for the twentieth through the twenty-eighth, I think it is.
So we've got next Wednesday be too quick, to your point. October fourth, October eleventh, October eighteenth are all Wednesdays.
David, what do you think? We just have to pick a Wednesday when we're not having a meeting.
Correct. So if that's, if that's the goal of the board, then I think October eleventh would probably be a best choice. October fourth is a board meeting, October eighteenth is a board meeting.
Okay.
So October eleventh would probably be the better date.
Wide open that day?
Ah, yeah. Time?
Is it noon?
Noon time?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you're thinking that you want to do it the lunch period, probably you have a couple of choices. You could do it, say, eleven thirty to one. And we would close the town hall for that period of time, let DPW come over, police fire. I assume you'd want to do it the council agent. And that would be option one. The other option is that you do it, say, at twelve to two and you stagger and say some people can go and stay. I'm really not in favor of that. I don't think that's the best idea. The only one item that I would caution is that if we're going to do this, just recognize I have not, because I couldn't have been prepared for tonight's meeting, I have not spoken to the COA director. So I have to make sure that she doesn't have programming that day at that time.
Okay, so tentative, October eleventh, doesn't necessarily have to be a Wednesday? Could be, what do you think, Jeff? Tuesday, Thursday?
Yeah, Thursday, doesn't matter.
So COA serves lunch to the, they have a lunch serving on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. So I think Wednesday actually really could be a good day. But I don't know if they're like doing Zumba or something else. So I just want to check with them.
Sure.
But I think that we should look at that date. And if it makes sense to you, I think you pick like an hour and a half or two hour time slot or at least an hour and a half. I think you're better off just closing the offices, notice the public in advance and allow everybody to be able to have lunch at the same time.
Okay. That sounds, that sounds good. Sounds good to you, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Are you okay eleven thirty to one or are you looking for something different?
If you think that's a good time, that's.
Well, no, eleven thirty-one sounds good. So October eleventh, and if that doesn't work, you can look at maybe an alternate day. Okay. Tina Asian Bistro, one fifteen South Main Street, closure and return of Common Vic license, uh, Common Vic and alcohol beverage licenses.
Correct. So we have been, the staff have been in constant contact with the owner as well. And for his choosing, he has decided to surrender and close his establishment. So he has turned in his all alcohol license to the town. And so he has voluntarily surrendered that. And obviously because he's closed, he would also have his Common Vic closed as well. So similar as we did earlier, what I would ask is, is for the board of selectmen to accept the voluntary surrender of a Tina Asian Bistro LLC, effective to these dates.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to place articles on special town meeting warrant for October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three?
So right now you have four warrant articles. And again, just as a recap, the special town meeting was originally premised on the fact that the town is going, the school is going to be looking to do a feasibility study in order to fund a new school in the future, and that is article one. So that was the primary reason and purpose that the board called for the special town meeting back in September. Since then, article two has come, so we opened it up to all departments. The DPW department has informed us that the plow truck that the town mechanic uses, and is also the service truck, because it fills up all the generators in town, that that engine has been bad for some time, antifreeze is leaking and it's got a head gasket problem and it is, it's not worth it to fix. As a result, they are going to be looking to replace their existing truck with a new truck. And with any luck, get it in before the winter season starts. Article three and four are both from the water department. Article three was not expected. Apparently there is a electric bill that was not paid in FY twenty-three that closed in June. And under municipal finance, you cannot pay a previous year's bill outside of that fiscal year. We're currently in FY twenty-four. So the only way to pay an outstanding bill from a preceding year is for town meeting to take, is for town meeting to approve it. Integrated, probably about a two hundred and fifty-year-old law, but that's the world that we live in. So with that said, I honestly don't know how much, it's an electric bill. I don't think it's a lot of money. It just has to get paid. In article four is similar to article one. It is going to be looking for design work to be done in order to do a new manganese water treatment plant. It is my understanding that right now they'll be looking for about seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It's also my understanding is that they're going to take the bulk of it from water surplus, which is equivalent to our free cash. And they have cash left over from previous years. But they don't have enough money to pay all of it. So what they want to do is they want to take as much cash as they can to borrow as little as possible. The reason I identify that is because at town meeting, a borrowing article requires two-thirds approval. And a transfer from free cash or water surplus is a majority vote. So I need to get with town council. I wouldn't be surprised if we have to break this up into two warrant articles, even though it's for the same, just because you have to get two different authorizations. So with that said, you have either four or five articles, depending on final review of town council.
And it's closed, right? This is it?
It is closed. There can be no more unless you choose to place something on yourself as the board.
I don't have anything to place, do you?
No. No, no, no. No, I would like to comment a little bit on article one. On Monday night, the school building committee held a informational session at the high school. It was posted today on the, on the video on demand section in the, in the website for cable TV. It is certainly worth a watch, just to get an understanding of what's coming and what's going on. So I would encourage everybody, you know, to watch that, try to watch that prior to heading to the, to town meeting on that night. And that's it for that.
So is there a motion to place the articles?
Yes, I make the motion to place the three or potential, I'm sorry, the four or potentially five articles.
And that would pending town council review and approval?
That's correct.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to create and appoint town communication committee.
Sure. So we talked about this back in August after a couple of things that happened in town. We don't, we don't have a great way to communicate to our residents, not in a timely or efficient manner. Water main breaks. Um, water main breaks, uh, variety of things can, can happen in town, and there's sort of two purposes to this, uh, to this committee as it forms. The first would be to find a, an efficient means to communicate urgent information out to our, out to our residents. And then the second part, um, would be to communicate more day to day, the day to day activities of, of West Bridgewater Government to its citizens, right? So, um, agendas, um, you know, meeting minutes, uh, calendar for upcoming events. All this stuff is on the website and it's available. I don't wanna make it sound like we're not transparent, 'cause I believe we are. Um, but it requires somebody to come to the website on a, on a frequent basis to pull the information. Um, and what I'd like to do is, you know, find the right means, and and it might exist with what we have right now. But I like to turn it around from sort of the come and pull it to push it, uh, to people on, on a variety of, you know, different, uh, on, on a variety of different, uh, methods to get that to people. For some people, it might be email. For other people, it might be something else. Um, so in speaking, um, with David, um, we thought this should be a member of, the committee should be made up with Board of Selectmen, uh, Water Department, um, Commissioner or Designee. I know Dylan has expressed great interest, and hopefully that, uh, that would be him in this case. Uh, Fire Chief, the Council on Aging Director, DPW Director, ADA Coordinator, a member or Designee from the Board of Health, and then, uh, I've had two residents speak to me, um, about, uh, about being on the committee as well. Both who've had experience um, in this type of, uh, activity and, uh, and could provide some, uh, some direction and help us out, so. Um, with that in mind, um, my goal for this committee is to understand what we need, hopefully prior to town meeting. Um, so if there's a budget that's needed for it, it can be presented as part of town meeting and then move forward from there. Um, but with as many town, uh, employees on this as possible, um, we'll do our best to try to meet, you know, late afternoon, something along those lines, Zoom, things like that, keep it moving, so.
And to be clear, where it says Chair for Board of Selectmen, because you're naming this, you can name as to who the Chair of it. So it's not the Chair of the Board of Selectmen is the.
It's the Chair of the.
And you're making sure that because this is really an option of the Board of Selectmen, that the Board of Selectmen is mandating that that person will be the Chair of the committee.
Okay.
But like, I think we know who that's going to be.
Yep.
So I think it's.
Now I'm excited for it.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's a monumental task. I'm glad you have a great cross-section of representation. I, I think you'll be, it, it's definitely destined for success. And I think with your IT background, you probably have a lot of ideas there as well.
Yeah, and there's, you know, and again, you know, Dylan has been, has been speaking to me about this since I was running, 'cause it was something I mentioned in the campaign. Um, and he's, you know, he's, he's already got some vendors lined up to look at things along those lines, so.
Great.
I'm looking forward to it. There's a bunch of people excited to, to get this going, and, uh, we'll see how it goes.
Thank you for taking this on, Jeff.
No, no problem.
It's great for the town. So we need a motion to vote to create committee and appoint people on the list or Designee.
Sure, I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it is my understanding that the residents at large, who will please on the next agenda to be appointed.
Yes, confirm with them one more time and go from there.
Excuse me. Right, next is a disclosure. Chairman Ray's discussion on residency. So I sent this letter today to Annie Anatelli, Town Clerk, actually gave it to the, to Christine to give to Annie. Uh, and I'll read it quickly. I am announcing that effective November second, twenty twenty three, I am resigning. A few months ago, I informed the public that I sold my house to one of our daughters and her husband. Nothing changed. I stayed living there. I tried my best to stay in West Bridgewater, but the inventory of affordable houses is nearly nonexistent. And after being outbid twice by fifty thousand dollars each time, it became evident that I needed to broaden search. It just didn't make long-term financial sense to overspend. The right house came along at the right price, but outside of West Bridgewater. I will stay living in West Bridgewater until the renovations are completed, and November third, twenty twenty three seems like a sound target date. I would like to thank the residents of West Bridgewater for their support and hope you think I served you well. I would also like to thank the West Bridgewater employees for their support. West Bridgewater is a beautiful community, and I am saddened to be leaving the position. I wish all the very best. Denise Rayes.
Uh, I'm more sad than you are. But, uh, nonetheless, we will, we will, we will reluctantly move forward. I, I have a bunch of stuff. I wrote down a bunch of stuff to say to thank you, but it's too early. We'll get you on the, on the November meeting and and we'll go from there.
Yeah.
Um, but you will be missed no more than by me. Um, but, um, in the meantime, you know, thank you for all you've done, and thank you for the guidance you're gonna continue to provide me
Yeah.
over the next month and beyond.
I, I will be available, you know, whether I live in West Bridgewater or I'm living somewhere else, although I won't be a selectman when I am living somewhere else, I am always available to anyone in town who needs someone to talk to, or if there's any advice I can give, or they're just looking for somebody to be allowed on the hub, I can certainly have those capabilities, and I've proven that very well. So, um, I'm always there for the town, for you, for the staff. David, thank you for all your years of support.
And thank you for all of your years of support as well.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Do we have to accept this, or is this just right into record?
You have no choice, unfortunately. It was, this was a tough decision.
And I've heard through the woodwork, you've already pulled papers during the selecting the other town.
Oh, someone's wanting to, definitely. But I'm too busy doing renovations. Um, but, you know, seeing my daughter Nicole, her family in that house, and how happy our grandchildren are. And when you see them riding their bikes down the street, and the little ones coming over looking to them, and going out to play, and all the chaos, it's, it's heartwarming to know they'll be in that house that I loved, and they'll be happy. And like I said, all the chaos in the house, and I'll be getting away from that, so everything's good. Everything is, is really good. It's, it's a great, great place to be, so. Thank you for the time. Communications and reports from Boards, Commissions, and Town Officials. I have nothing to report. Do you have anything to report?
No, I do not.
Okay. Correspondence from the public to determine a course of action. Would the public like to correspond at this time? Marcy?
Hi.
Oh, hi.
That's it.
Just a hi.
Hi.
Okay.
Save that for public comment period.
Please don't go.
Yeah.
Please don't go.
Oh, yeah, well, I kinda combined both. Uh, well, there was no correspondence.
Nope.
Public comment period, we just had it. Marcy said hi. Uh, we'll move on to the.
And please don't go.
And oh, please don't go. Thank you. Town Administrators Report.
So thank you. So, uh, first is really just a disclosure. As you know, we received through the county one point three million dollars of ARCA funds a couple of years ago. And I placed this on the agenda really for two reasons. Uh, one is, is that, um, and I've met with the Treasurer of the county, uh, two weeks ago, signed all the paperwork, and we are in the process of, we should actually see that money deposited into our account over the next two to three weeks. So that's really good. The Water Department, if you remember, the board earmarked that money exclusively to be used by the Water Department in order to be able to pay for the water treatment plan. So it'll help to defray, so we don't have to borrow as much money. So I think that's really good. The money is going to be available. The second reason I placed it on there is because I also wanna say thank you to Denise. Um, at that time, at one, the, um, the county was actually only going to give us fifty percent of the funds. And what was interesting is that almost no other municipalities knew that. I argued with the Commissioners, um, and then I asked Denise for her help as well, and I think, I mean, if you remember, you talked to other counterparts, and nobody knew.
Right.
Right? And so I think really my involvement and then asking for your involvement and your involvement at your level was really instrumental to making sure that we received one point three million instead of six hundred fifty six thousand. So again, we placed on the agenda, but I wanted to say thank you for that as well.
Righto.
Thank you.
Um, speed humps. Um, so it seems forever ago, but it was in May that we talked about, uh, speed humps on Scotland Street. So we are finally just about there. Uh, but you'll recall, the board has, uh, um, authorized the, a temporary policy to put speed humps out and see, collect data, and come back and see what we're gonna do with it. So with that said, is that we have now put, uh, reader boards out on Scotland Street so we can notice the public. They went out there on Monday. They will be there for a couple of weeks. TL Edwards was the low bidder on the speed humps. They will be installing two of them. Um, the Police Chief, the DPW Director, um, and a resident all got together, and they have decided as to where those speed humps are gonna go, and they're all happy with it. So we should see speed humps there in a couple of weeks. At that time, I've also asked the Police Chief to put a speed board out on that street as well, so we can start to collect data, 'cause it will give us two pieces of information. What is the volume and what is the speed? And what's really nice is, is that we have data from three to four years ago in the fall period. So we should really have an apples to apples comparison, so we're gonna be able to make a comparison. Bring it back to the board, um, and at that point, the board can decide as to whether or not the speed humps were effective and maintain them. Or if they weren't effective, we can take them down, or somewhere in between.
Can you give us kind of a, a verbal visual, uh, what, does this go all the way across the road, partway across the road?
Yep, the ones that they chose are fourteen feet wide. They, I think they're gonna be black with yellow stripes, and they go ninety-eight percent across the road. You just have to allow areas at the end for drainage for my rates. So that, um, you know, that's that on speed humps. Um, we unfortunately also have our Police Chief that's going to be retiring at the end of the year. Um, so the board voted to start the process a couple of months ago. Since then, uh, we have contracted with public safety consultants. They are an extremely reputable firm. They actually did our Police Chief assessment, uh, when we hired the, uh, hired Chief Flaherty. Um, they're very good. Sixty-three hundred dollars will be paid out of the Police Department budget, and that is the same price that we paid seven years ago. So they're giving us a really good price. They do a very professional job. It will be done sometime in the middle of the fall, uh, with the expectation to be able to have someone to bring back and for the board, uh, December, January time period, uh, to appoint the Chief. And the last item, um, falls under the category of when you think you've seen it all, you haven't. Um, so, um. So. Um, last week, I received an anonymous letter in my mail at my home address. The letter threatened me directly. It required that I hire someone, and if not, they would extort me. I provide all evidence to the Police Department, and I am fully cooperating with their investigation. In addition, they have reached out to their partners in law enforcement, so right now it is a multi-pronged investigation. I have shared that evidence with each member of the board, so each one of you have seen it as you are my appointing authority. I've also shared the evidence with town council, and I wanna make sure that everybody is aware of this. That as a town official, I am indemnified. So that means that whoever is taking this action, person or persons, is that they're not just taking it against me, they're also taking it against the town. So it is the resources of the town that is also going to be used as well. I can tell you that I've always taken great pride in being a professional manager and making sure that we hired using a robust hiring process. And I think our track record speaks for itself. The Board of Selectmen ha- um, created a, a formal hiring policy, and we have always followed it. The board creates the job description, and I go out and I implement the policies of the board. So when somebody attempts to do this, really, although they are attacking me, and it is personal in nature, they were also attacking the board and the actions of this town. I don't think it's fair to the, to the, to the town. It's not a fair to the taxpayer, 'cause the taxpayer is gonna end up paying for some of this. Um, and so I just, I, I wanted to make sure that you were aware, the general public is aware, and that we'll continue to do our best to, um, to follow a professional hiring policy going forward. And, and you know, we're, you know, when, when people make threats, um, they're really cowards. I mean, literally, that's what it comes down to. If they really had a legitimate gripe or issue or problem, they could have had that conversation. They chose not to. They went this way. They went the wrong way, and we're gonna turn over every single item that we can and try to prosecute, prosecute those people. That's the disclosure.
So, in my opinion, someone who does something like this is clearly stating they are the type of person that if you don't do what they want, they will use what they know about you against you. And that's really sad, because if anyone knows who did this, I hope they are sitting back thinking, what does that person have on them? Because that, that's the mentality you're dealing with, is someone who, you don't do what I want, I am going to use whatever I have against you. And that amounts to pretty much a spineless jellyfish, in my opinion. Um, this is completely unacceptable. What you said, David, is that it, it is a strike against the town? It, it truly is, because then it's a, it's a very strong comment. And to send it to your house, um, that's really low of the low. I, I hope the police investigation is successful. I hope they do identify who did this. I hope it's fully exposed to the entire town. Um. It, it's just incredible that somebody would stoop to this level in, in this day and age. Um. I really hope I don't know the person. I, I'd really like to think that whomever would do something like this is not someone I know. I hope that is the case. Uh. It's really a pretty lousy thing to do. And, um, a- again, I really hope I don't know them, because I wouldn't want that person for a friend or a coworker, or to even be associated with them.
Yeah, I don't, I echo most of what you say and just echo.
Just most.
Just.
Probably not everything. Um, no, I'm, I'm on board. Um, but, you know, for me, I, while it was directed at you, um, to your point, we set the job description and, um, and we moved forward, so that was our choice, so I do take it personally as well. Um, I don't respond well to threats. Actually, I don't respond to threats, period. Um, and I agree that person, I call that person a coward as well for, for hiding behind a, you know, something like that, so. Um, I have more I'd like to say, but I think the best thing to do is let the investigation play out, and then, uh, hopefully we can say it to the person. And we'll go from there. But not acceptable by any stretch.
And our apologies that you had to, um, experience this.
Yep.
You know, and just, just to add very briefly, I, I don't think what a lot of people realize is not only the time and effort we take to be in this role, but also the time and effort you take to support us in this role. Uh, our successes are a lot to do with your efforts. I mean, David, from the time I started in this position, every week would set aside an hour or two to bring me up to speed what was going on, and to also go over what was on the agenda prior to the meeting. Make sure I understood the logistics, the laws, the, the protocol that we have to follow, and he continues to do that. I know he's done it with every single selectman who's been in this position. Not a single selectman in this town, person in this town, who's been elected as a selectman, has walked in the door and been able to walk in the meeting and know what to do, or to just get the agenda and know what to do. So, eh, our successes are based on your efforts, and I, I hope people in West Bridgewater, I know the great majority do, respect what you do and appreciate what you do, but I just wanna again say thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so that was the bombshell for the evening. Nothing left to discuss, and so.
It's one of the bombshells for the evening.
One, oh, I'm sorry. One of the bombshells of the evening. Unless there's anything left to discuss, I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make that motion to adjourn.
We'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.